Good evening and welcome to February sixth, two thousand twenty-five. The zoning board of adjustments meeting is called to order. It is six P M. We do have a quorum of four members and one alternate. And our first order of business is approval of minutes from February, uh, from December fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
It's been motion. Is there a second? It's been motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. We have a regular agenda and I want to make sure that I explain the process here. That each item is a public hearing. And then we will have the purpose of the hearing. And then we will have a staff report. After we have the staff report, then we will have an applicant presentation. After the applicant presentation, if there any persons wishing to speak for or against proposal. After that, then the panel or staff, we will have a discussion and then we will move into consideration and possible action. So each item goes through that process. So a regular agenda, our first item is consideration and possible action. V A R Z twenty-four dash twenty-eight. A variance for a reduction of the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces for a shopping center and recreational center use. This is a request by Kenrick Holmes, Inc., applicant on behalf of Kawaja Java Hassan, owner, for approval of variance as permitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number two thousand dash T to allow for the reduction of the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces for a shopping center and recreation center use in the general business district. This has a general location of eighty-five thirty-five Broadway Street, Pearland, Texas. Do you have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. With that, let me introduce Katie Peterson. Katie, take it away.
Good evening, board members. Um, tonight's request, as was just presented by the Chair, is a request to allow for the reduction in parking spaces required to develop a shopping center with recreation space above. It would be an event center. Um, the proposed shopping center in total would be twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-one square feet. And that would require, um, one hundred and ten point six parking spaces, which by our ordinance requirements would round to that one hundred and eleven parking spaces. The site plan that's been provided by the applicant proposes eighty-six spaces. Um, so if the parking spaces which have been provided were to go the opposite direction and, um, you use the number of spaces to determine the square footage, the amount of square footage that would be permitted on this site, based on the one space per two thousand square foot of shopping center, would be seventeen thousand two hundred square feet of shopping center. I'm sorry, one space per two hundred square feet, um, which is how it is presented in the staff report and on the screen. I just can't speak tonight, so. As of the time of publishing this application, the, there were no public comments for or against the project. It was posted in the Pearland News Reporter and public notices were sent out. The sign has been on, on the property as well by the applicant. This is the zoning map here, so you can see it's in the general business zoning district. Um, and it is front along Broadway. It is just west of the Cullen intersection. For the existing uses surrounding it, um, there's a Jiffy Lube and a gas station, I believe it's an Exxon, that are directly next to Cullen. Behind it is the post office, which has a gated access that runs along the east, um, west side of this property. You can see there where the mouse is. Beyond that gated access drive for the post office is an undeveloped parcel. Across the street, you have undeveloped land medical offices and then the Walgreens that's there on the corner. History of the site, it was annexed into the city of Pearland in nineteen ninety-five, platted in nineteen ninety-seven, and has been vacant since. This is a copy of the site plan that was provided by the applicant, um, for review of the site. So you can see there's the, um, larger building there, which would have the event space in it with an open to below portion, um, as well as then a standalone building to the side there, which is labeled Building One. For the criteria for a variance, um, I'm going to run through these a little bit. The criteria for a variance are found in our Unified Development Code, and it has been found that it does not meet any of the eight criteria fully. The, um, first item is that there's special circumstances, which are about the physicality of the lot. In this case, the parcel is of similar size and configuration to other lots within the zoning district, um, and along this corridor. So the staff has found that there is no physical hardship to this and the applicant has not identified a, a physical hardship to the subject property either. The second is that it does not, um, similarly affect the properties in the adjacent area. For this case, a shopping center specifically from an undeveloped site is similar to properties in the vicinity, so it does not meet that requirement. The third is that it's for the preservation and enjoyment of this substantial property right of the petitioner, as it is still an undeveloped site within the same zoning districts as others that are the same size. Um, the, the lot size should be taken into consideration as the development plan for the site is proposed, so it does not meet this requirement. Granting the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or injurious to other property within the area. While it does not immediately appear to have a direct impact to the public health and safety, staff's concern is that the parking, if it is in deficit, would have to overflow onto other properties within the site, leaving the sidewalk on Broadway to be the only pedestrian access to it. So we find it does not meet that criteria, criterion as well. Um, the fifth criterion is the, um, able to use the land without the, the granting of this variance. In this case, the twenty-five parking space reduction could result in the property being underparked, which would, um, result into it overflowing into other spaces. The sixth is that the criteria for, or inequity suffered by the petitioner is not caused wholly in part by the petitioner. In this case, as it is a wholly undeveloped parcel, the site define, design and parking configuration are caused by the petitioner in this case, and the variance is a result of designing the property with buildings that are too large for this site. Um, and then the final one, or the second to final one, is that it is not just for the desire for increased financial gain from the property or to reduce an existing financial hardship, because this is, again, it's based on the applicant's desire to build additional square footage on the site. Um, it would not result in the need for a variance if it were built in a smaller sized structure and it is for the financial, increased financial gain on the site, and there is no existing hardship to it. And then the final one is that the degree of the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to meet the needs of the site. This one, it does potentially meet, however, the resubmitted site plan that we received with the updated numbers was not received until the resubmit date. And so we were unable to fully review the site for, by time of publish of this staff report in order to scope out other items that may result basically in a domino effect. So while the number of parking spaces they're requesting the variance for is the minimum that would meet the, their need for this amount of square footage on the site, staff cannot speak to the ability to meet the other site requirements, the design standards for, um, fire lanes and accessing like that, which may have a domino effect. Um, and so it may or may not meet this requirement once the, the site plan has been fully reviewed. So the staff's analysis of this is that it meets zero of the eight criteria, which are found in that section two-two-five-two D of our Unified Development Code. And while staff is understanding that the likelihood of the business having the needs for parking at offset times, there is no real means, um, to allow that through our Unified Development Code. Um, additionally, the applicant has not identified a hardship associated with the subject property that would create an undue hardship or inequity if the minimum off-street parking were not in compliance with the U D C. So staff recommends denial of the variance for the reduction of the twenty-five parking spaces.
Thank you. We'd like to move into applicant presentation. Is there an applicant here to present anything? If you would, sir, would you go to the podium, right back there, and state your name and address?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Arash Falahi. I'm the architect of the project. The only thing that I wanted to add-
State your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is eight hundred West Sam Houston Parkway South, Houston, Texas, seven-seven-zero-four-two.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. The thing that we wanted to add to this presentation is that the owner or the developer is, um, uh, they want to set a restriction, uh, by setting operational hours, uh, for this additional, uh, five thousand square feet that we are deficient in the parking spaces. So the larger building that you're looking at, uh, is supposed to, at least, to medical offices, which they, um, typically operate within usual business hours from eight to five and on weekdays. And that additional five thousand square feet is, uh, proposed to be used for banquet and even spaces. So, and usually they operate after five with the peak hour during weekends, so this natural business operation kind of distinct the, uh, the building use. And, uh, this is also not to rent out to banquet business people. It is gonna be operated by the property owner, so they have all the means to enforce that restriction, uh, on this facility. So basically, uh, the same square footage will be used at the same time, but restricting the same five thousand square feet of the main building than the banquet, uh, facilities in operation. So that's the justification we had for presenting this case.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Do we have any persons wishing to speak or against proposal? I have a card here with, uh, Richard Fluke, Fluke, Fluke Chicken? Fluke Kicker. Thank you, sir. Sorry for the mispronunciation. If you would, state your name and address, and you have three, three minutes to, uh, speak, sir.
Richard Fluke Kicker, two-eight, one-eight East Elm Circle, KD, Texas, seven-seven-four-nine-three. Uh, just to clarify, uh, on that drawing that you're looking at, it's the piece with the lines going through it. So, uh, there's five thousand square feet below and then an equivalent five thousand square feet above. Our proposal is, is that we will require, uh, the five thousand below to be closed at five o'clock, Monday through Friday. The banquet hall won't book anything until six o'clock, Monday through Friday. The downstairs part will also be required to be closed on the weekends, and that's when the banquet hall will also be used. Uh, as Arash stated, uh, the owner is gonna be the operator of the banquet hall, so he will have every incentive to make sure and police the fact that these guys should be out of their place at five o'clock, closed and closing up and leaving, because he's gonna want enough parking for his, his banquets and his parties. Um, so, so I think our, our, our view is, is it's not really a variance. We're just saying, uh, we believe if you look at the times that, that the certain parts of the building are gonna be used, we, we meet your parking requirements. That's what we hope that you find.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have Arash. That was, okay. I also have a Lo, Lo Keesh. Okay, sorry. Any other person wishing to speak for or against proposal? Hey, we'd like to move into staff commission and applicant discussion. Any questions or comments from the board to the staff or applicant?
Well, I'm wondering to make a comment. I commend the creative thinking of the, uh, way we're hoping, or y'all are hoping to be able to use parking space. I think our city, well, I wish our city had, uh, more ballroom space like this or meeting spaces. We have very few. I can remember over the last six or seven years, uh, meetings that I was involved in, and there just was no space to go have a meeting unless you went to another city to do that, so I commend you for that. My only question, or my only concern, I guess, is that, and we've had this issue come up before. I like the way y'all were thinking about the timing of the use of the facilities there, certainly, but what happens when you sell this property and the next person or company buys this and they don't have the same, um, timing because of the types of use that are planned here? I'm just saying, that's, that's come up before. We have to take the long view and not just what you guys might be doing, and which I agree with, by the way.
Mr. Fluke Kicker, if you'd go back to the podium to answer?
If you would go to the podium and answer that question. Thank you, sir.
That's a great question. Uh, we believe that we can do that through a deed restriction, so that when we sell the property, that whoever buys it's gonna be, they understand when they buy it that they're restricted to these requirements.
Is that a, is that a potential, or is that legal, or is that an enforceable condition?
I'm gonna let the seven forty-seven land before I respond. I don't, I don't know what that noise is. Well, theoretically, it seems like it would be a practical solution. The difficulty is that the ownership interest, because it's all one lot, um, they could have that deed restriction, they can have that pass on to a potential new owner, and then that potential new owner, because they have a hundred percent of the interest, could change that deed restriction. And then the city would not be able to, well, even if that is their business operation plan, it's not something that the city is able to control. It's not a party to any type of agreement that would regulate that. Um, and if they change that deed restriction, um, our experience is that it is the police department who gets called out to regulate an internal parking problem. And there's not much of a regulation they can do, because it's not a city ordinance violation.
And just to add to that, it not only becomes an internal, uh, condition of the site due to the cross-access, it has ability to potentially spill over into adjacent properties, uh, further exacerbating the issue.
What was the building to the east of that? I forgot what it showed on the map y'all had.
Uh, one with the large detention pond towards the back.
Jiffy Lube, okay.
Going east, you've got Jiffy Lube, then you've got the Chevron there at the hard corner, uh, and then the post office is to the rear.
Yeah, I doubt, I doubt Jiffy Lube's got too many parking spots marked out there, do you think? I know last meeting we had one where there was an issue sharing parking space in a big outlook like this, and, uh, I was hoping maybe that would be the case here, but it, it doesn't look like it is. Thank you, sir, very much.
I'm not a lawyer, but I, it seems like we could require this, you know? We do buy a lot of properties. It seems like we could make it where it can't be changed. Is that not possible to make, where the requirements that are set forth must be met in order to purchase the property?
Wh- while I am a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer on the commercial side. Um, and I, I don't think I could answer that for you. I can only tell you what our experience has been. When we've had other people in similar situations, they frequently call the city of Pearland. They frequently have the parking issues, um, and the, the city frequently says, that is your commercial enterprise. I'm sorry, we can't, we can't resolve that, but we do get the calls from the citizens who then get their call, their vehicles towed because of whatever internal parking dispute.
Excuse me, one other thing we, I think we left out. We're in negotiations with the property just to the west that's developed, not, obviously, you know, not the empty lot. One to the left, they have three buildings there. Uh, one of them is open Monday through Friday until, uh, I believe, seven P M. and then open some hours on Saturday. The other two buildings are closed, you know, at five o'clock, Monday through Friday, and not open on the weekends. We've talked to a valet company and we, uh, we're, we're in negotiation with them. We're gonna, we're gonna hire them, and we are, uh, we have a letter of intent that's, we're working on right now with the property owner over there, so that we can utilize another twenty-five, uh, parking places in case there is some overflow. I think that's all I have.
I guess my-
If I could follow up on that, just because there is a procedure that the Z B A can approve off-site parking, we don't have that in front of us right now.
Right.
Um, because that's not what we have, but that would, that, that may be a viable future special exception that the Z B A could grant. Um, do you know if you have the rights to cross, maybe I'm misunderstanding, though, as you explore that alternative? Would, would you be, are you saying the, the vacant parcel or the one that's at eighty-six oh-three?
The developed one over there with the, right there with the three buildings. And, and as I said, what we would do is, uh, we're, we're gonna have valet, so the people would pull up to the banquet hall, and then the valet company takes care of the cars. Um, if there's a, there's a sidewalk, I don't, I don't, can't remember if there's an existing sidewalk there, Ken, do you know if there is?
There is no sidewalk in between.
There's no sidewalk.
We would, we would be willing-
There will be with text dots redevelopment plan, though. Uh, I, I believe that area has a sidewalk coming in.
We'd be willing to-
However, the, the concern that I would have about that is the median break and whether the cars could get back over to the other side with that text dot plan.
I, I think we're, we're entertaining something that's not-
That's not in front of us yet. Absolutely. Uh, just-
So let me, let me, this is a question that I have that was brought up by the staff. What is it where we cannot get the parking right now? What can we? Why can't we make it to the, uh, the required parking? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Just the size of the building that we're trying to, you know, the cost of land, as I'm sure you know, in Pearland is very valuable. And in order to make this thing, but, you know, economically viable for us, we feel like we have to get that much square footage in. So that's why we came up, it's a great question, but I mean, it's, and it's to you guys, you know, the, the city of Pearland's a, a very nice address, okay? And what comes with that is, you know, incredible, uh, property, property prices and value. So, uh, you know, to make it economically viable, we believe, we needed to get about twenty-two thousand square feet. And so, uh, and once again, that's why we came up with, and ahead of this, we, we anticipated, we've, you know, we've done developments throughout Texas, and we anticipated that you guys would have, you know, the-
So this is-
We knew, we've talked to the staff, that you're gonna have problems with the parking, so that's why we talked about the closing down, making them close at the same time, make deed restricting it, and also having an off-site overflow backup contingency.
So this property will have two buildings, one will be two stories and one will be a single story?
Yes, sir. The, the first building here on the, on my right, so at the, towards Broadway, okay? That one is, uh, a little over, uh, it's not quite five thousand square feet. And the second building, that's all one building. Where the lines, where the diagonals are, that's where the equip, the five thousand square feet is gonna be above. That's, it's only, the two-story will only be at the very back and only for five thousand square feet.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the, uh, yes?
Um, the two hundred square feet is for what type of use? This is the staff. Is that, um, is that commercial or rest- That the two thousand square feet for parking space, what is that?
Sorry, it's one space per two hundred square feet.
I'm sorry, two hundred?
It's for the, the shopping center use, which would incorporate all of this.
It's for retail.
It is, but it's also for shopping center and for the event space. It'd be, the, it's one space per two hundred square feet for all of this, all of the things that are being proposed on this site as it currently sits.
The event space has two hundred, one parking for every two hundred square feet?
It does, is incorporated with a shopping center.
Is, uh, this, oh, I'm sorry. Jerry, go ahead.
I, I, I can see if this is the site plan we're looking at, um, we're gonna lose parking spaces because of the fires, uh, fire lane requirements. Am I incorrect in that, or?
Not certain I follow.
Is that, that, that fire lane seems to be pretty long without a way to get out.
More than happy to, uh, have the architect answer, but, um, normally our fire lane requirements, uh, you have to be able to access both sides of the building, so that's probably the reason why, uh, that fire lane is extended as far as it is.
How does a fire truck make a U-turn to get out?
So our fire trucks are allowed to have a hundred and fifty foot of back out. So that's-
Mr. Acosta, I, I think what you're getting at is when the fire truck goes to back out, it has to go to the-
It has to go three hundred feet.
Top-left corner, um, in order to back out, or it's gonna have to back out all the way to the drive-through.
Three hundred feet.
Yeah, and that's beyond the distance that they would do that, but I, I'm sure that they've done some sort of analysis on this. This is not the typical diagram that we would see in Appendix D of the International Fire Code. Maybe you can help us better understand why it deviates, uh?
Yes, we had this reviewed by the Fire Marshal Office at the city of Pearland, and Building Two is a sprinkler, that's why they're at, making that extension of the fire lane turnaround. We had this issue specifically discussed with the, the Fire Code reviewer at the city.
I'll throw my two cents in here. The, I can't support approving this for the simple fact of if, if you all strike the deal with the neighbor and get a document back here that says, hey, we can get the off-site parking, just like we did with the, the Methodist Church situation, I can, I could go with that. But then it leads to another legal question I'm gonna ask is, if, if they get that, they get that agreement with the neighbor and the neighbor sells that piece of property, does that agreement stay intact? Or if they sell this shopping center, does, does that requirement fall over on the new owner?
So what I would say to that is, it, it presents staff with a, um, an uncomfortable position if we get to that enforcement action. The section of the U D C that allows for the Z B A to approve a special exception for off-site parking says that it has to be a long-term parking agreement, which we would anticipate being more than five years. Um, and it says that it has to be approved by the city of Pearland's legal department. I get the joy of reviewing those and, because I don't want to be involved in their personal business lease.
I understand that.
Um, you know, the city's not a party to that. We end up creating a, or we have created a separate agreement that essentially protects the city's interest. And the unfortunate reality of that agreement is, if for any reason that parking agreement, their private parking agreement, uh, is terminated or voided for any reason, the certificate of occupancy, uh, is revoked by the city if they do not meet that term within a certain two, show us how they could meet it another way. Show us how they could meet it another way. That's not the position anybody wants anybody to be in, uh, because that means that you have a vacant structure. City doesn't want undeveloped property nor does it want vacant property. We would rather it be property that complies with the city's requirements.
Thank you. The, and I'm a business owner. I understand where you're, because I own property here in Pearland and the, I understand the cost of it, but we have to look at what would we do for anybody. And so the way it is, I can't support it.
I have another question of staff. If, um, the second story structure, or whatever we call that second story was not added to this, would that, whatever that square footage of, would that allow the, uh, UDC, would that allow the code to be met without having to talk about parking spaces?
If the space in which is shaded is the 5,000 square feet of event space, they are, they would be able to meet the parking requirements, um, based on my math, because I, it's, uh, 22. I believe the answer is yes. Um, but I, I don't know if it's specifically only the second story, which comes out to be that additional square footage that puts them over the threshold, but I believe the answer is yes. I'd, I'd have to see an actual floor plan that gives me the exact square footage breakdown, but I believe yes.
Was the petitioner or applicant listening to that, I wonder? I, I don't know what y'all's situation is.
I think your question, Mr. Schrum, is would the applicant be satisfied keeping it as a single story instead of a second story event center? Would that be economically viable project for you, which would take away the need for a special exception? Is, is that what I'm understanding your question to be?
That is my question.
We're not here to vote on that.
Uh, yes, sir. They could, if that's what they choose to do, they don't need to be here tonight.
First of all, to, to the point about, is there enough without it? I believe it is because we drew it up first without it.
Yes, and Patrick just confirmed my math.
Yeah, so I think we're good there. Um, you know, once again, economically viable. You know, it, uh, and I appreciate the fact that your business, probably most of your are business people, but, you know, and everybody owns property here in Pearland. It's just that, you know, we're coming in now doing new development, you know, with the new costs associated with new development and, um, I mean, obviously it pushes your, your, your timeframe where you can recoup your investment substantially back. I, I guess that's the best way to answer your question.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or other comments from the board to the staff or applicant? Okay, we'd like to move into consideration and possible action. Would you place the, um, motion on the table? Jerry, would you read the motion, please?
Yes. I make a motion to approve variance 24 dash 28 as presented.
It's been motion. Is there a second? It's been motion and second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion fails zero to five. We'd like to move into our second consideration of possible action. VARZ 24 dash 17. This is a special exception for development to occur on a property with an existing non-conformity. This is a request by Lucy Magana, applicant on behalf of driver RE Pearland LLC owner for approval of a special exception as permitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number 2000 dash T to allow for the development occur on a property with existing non-conformities. This has a general location of 3316 Industrial Drive, Pearland, Texas. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Let me introduce Patrick Power. Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. As mentioned, the request before you night is for a special exception to allow for development to occur on a property with existing non-conformities. Specifically, the non-conformity pertains to the existing building along Industrial Drive as it, um, as its distance to the front setback. Um, and the improvements on the site, which I'll show in the site plan, I mean, a couple of slides include a a 35,880 square foot operation and maintenance shop, a 15,987 square foot fabrication building, um, some additional parking for the site and a detention pond. And to date, staff received one written comment, um, against the request and the written comment actually more pertain to, um, ensuring that the site received BDD4 approval, which they will be required to go through with doing, they'll be required to do that through the plat of the property and the site plan. And so looking at, here's an aerial kind of first of the property as well as the zoning. Um, subject property is within the light industrial M1 zoning district. Um, that same zoning is to the northwest, to the west and to the south. And we see some general business zoning to the, uh, north. And then to the east is the, uh, plan unit development zoning and specifically this is the, uh, French Quarter Plan Development, which is kind of a senior, uh, more housing project. So here we get a look at a better aerial of the property. Um, you can see some of the, this white building is that one which actually pertains to the existing non-conformity on the site. And the applicant is actually, the development proposes to actually demolish this one in the middle, um, to allow for those further buildings. I'm looking at some of the surrounding uses. Um, we see some warehousing to the, uh, northwest and to the west. Uh, some undeveloped land to the north and south. Um, to the, north also is the, uh, Forgotten Angels, uh, site. And then to the east is that age-restricted, um, development, and this is actually more of the single-family subdivision portion because there's some single-family and assisted living. So this will actually be the single-family portion of that development and plans are currently in review for that project. So looking at a history of the property, it was originally annexed into the city in 1983. Um, first development though occurred before coming into the city in 1978. Um, and then additional buildings and expansions were developed in 1995, uh, in 2000. And then also of note, 1978 was when that existing building that pertains to the non-conformity when it was built. And currently, as I mentioned, the property is being platted. So here we get a look at the proposed site plan, uh, for the site. A pure with that, uh, white, the white building at the front, that's that existing building. It's 3,000 square feet. Um, here's some proposed parking at the front. And then the proposed buildings with the smaller one being that, uh, fabrication shop. And then, um, the bigger one as well being that operation and maintenance shop. And then to the, um, uh, east side of the property is where they're proposing their detention pond, um, which is where any, any other additional requirements of the UDC for like buffering and whatnot would be required at that time. It's looking a little closer at the existing non-conformity. Looking in at that building specifically, we see that the M1 district, light industrial district, requires a 35-foot front setback for any building. And currently that building is approximately 18.5 feet from that front property line, so it's extending in. And you can see that outlined yellow portion is the portion of the building that's extending into, um, the front setback. And so looking at the approval criteria for a special exception, staff found that the request met criteria in four, uh, for approval. And as mentioned, the existing building was developed in 1978 prior to the property being annexed into the city in 1983. And it's of note that if the site were to come into compliance with the required front setback, then any portion of the existing building would need to be demolished as it encroaches on the setback, which may pose a hardship to the property. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the special exception request to allow for development to occur on a property with an existing non-conformity. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Is there an applicant to have a presentation? We'd like to move into any persons wishing to speak for or against. We'd like to move into staff and applicant discussion. Any questions from the board to the staff or applicant?
Yeah, um, I think I'm looking at the correct comment page. Y'all printed this out and gave it to us. I had the darnedest time trying to explain and understand what he says with these measurements here. Can somebody explain it to me in kindergarten terms?
Yeah, so the, the comment had to do with, um, whenever this area has a, um, imagine it's a drainage way kind of running through a portion of it. And you can see it, not with this image, but it's kind of hard to see here, but there's already a drainage way running through this portion right here. And this is actually a area that, um, Brazoria Drainage District Number Four, um, has jurisdiction over. And so during the plating process, um, they will review it and see, hey, is there any easements that need to be given? Or is, this isn't a creek, so it wouldn't likely be a right-of-way. But they look at and say, hey, is there an easement that should, um, be applied to this area? And, um, I believe the comment came from adjacent property owner of the plan unit development that they went through the plating process and they had a dedication, um, during that time. And so without, is that the, I know the plat's currently going through the process. Um, and it, it, can't say if it will have a, a dedication for the easement or like an easement on the property, but my guess is if the, if the property next to it did have one, then they will have one. And it'll be up to BDD4 to review to say what can and can't go in there. Um, like whether the proposed parking that may not be able to go in there, um, if they don't give approval for it to be within there. Um, additionally, and Florence, you can correct me on this, the existing building, we're giving approval for it to be in the front setback, but BDD4 will review it for being in the easement. And that'll be up to them at the end because that's their easement, whether or not, I wanna say whether or not it stays or not, but it's up to them at that point to review it. And that's why they're not just required to come to us for permitting since they are within B, uh, BDD4's jurisdiction. They'll go to them, um, to ensure approval for the plat and for the site plan.
So the objection raised here is not within the purview or scope of what we have authority to consider.
Yeah, yeah. It pertains to a BDD4 comment, which is a separate entity that they'll review it and they have to get a, the applicant has to get approval from them as well.
All right. Staff, would you tell me why we didn't talk about what the landscaping requirements were on this? Remember the last time we met and we had this big, huge discussion about, uh, landscaping? But when we had a commercial city property, uh, adjacent to single-family homes, but I don't, I don't see anything here.
Yeah, so I'd say this plan is not focused on the landscape. Just because it's not shown doesn't mean, they're not asking for a variance from the landscaping. They're purely asking to allow for the building to stay. So they'll still be required to provide a landscape plan and provide, whether they provide the masonry fence with street trees or, or large shade trees or the large shade trees with ornamental trees and, um, a continuous vegetative row is up to them in the end. This is purely a site plan. So to say that all other UDC requirements for screening, whether you're, if you're next to a single-family or screening of if they have outdoor storage areas, those areas will have to comply with the requirements of the UDC. So this doesn't exempt them. It's purely the site plan is just meant to show the buildings, um, in the paved areas.
So our, our variance, the only issue we're considering tonight is whether or not the, the existing building encroaching into the right-of-way. We're, we're not voting on anything having to do with any proposed building internally. That's, it's for information only.
Almost. Uh, you, you described it as the right-of-way. It's not encroaching in the right-of-way. It's encroaching within the front yard setback. So I think there, there was a diagram that had it in yellow.
Right there.
We're just, the applicant is asking ZBA to allow that portion of the building that's in the yellow, that's been there since 1978, to remain there as they develop their site.
Any other, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, thank you.
Any other questions or comment from the board to staff or applicant? We'd like to move into the consideration of possible action. Todd, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the 24 dash 17 as presented by staff.
It's been motion to a second.
I second the motion.
It's been motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. We'd like to move into consideration and possible action of VARZ 25 dash zero two, special exception for development to occur on a property with an existing non-conformity. This is a request by Lokish Kosla, and please forgive me if I misspelled applicant, mispronounced. Applicant on behalf of Quick Equipment Sales LLC owner for approval of a special exception as permitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number 2000 dash T to allow for development of, to occur on a property with existing non-conformities. This has a general location of 5220 Shank Road, Pearland, Texas. Staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, once again, Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. So this is somewhat of a similar request, still a special exception, uh, and focused on special exception to allow for development to occur on a property with existing non-conformities. Um, the existing non-conformities on the site pertain to two aspects of the site. Um, one is the side setback for the existing building. And then also the required planting areas, um, that would be required along the future, uh, Woody Road right-of-way. I mean, the improvements, um, excuse me, that trigger the need for the special exception include, um, approximately a little over 200,000 uh, square feet of pavement, which is meant for, uh, outdoor storage and parking areas. And also to construct a crane system over the existing loading dock that is on the site. So to date, staff has not received any comments in support or against the request. And kind of looking at the site, um, as an aerial and then what's around it, um, we see that it's within the light industrial M1 zoning. And it has that same zoning, uh, on all sides. And you can see it kind of dead ends. It's kind of the, it's the west end of Shank Road where it dead ends. And not shown right now, but Woody Road would, following my cursor, the future Woody Road would flow through this section on the map. It's looking at some of the surrounding, uh, uses. We see that most of it's surrounded by the pipe yard to the north and the west. Um, we have a manufacturing facility that's currently under construction to the south. And additionally, there also are some, um, large lot, single-family residences that, um, are along Shank Road on the, the south side of Shank Road to the, uh, east of the property. It's looking at a history of the property. It's a little bit more of a unique property because it actually got annexed in sections. So kind of the little portion of the front half of the property along the east side was annexed in 1960. Then kind of the middle portion was 1981 and kind of the back portion of the lot, the western side of the lot, was 1983. Um, and the site was first developed with structures in 1979. And this is actually, the 1979 pertains to the building that is an existing non-conformity. And it's also that building was built in the portion of the property that was annexed in 1981. So just to say it kind of has moving factors with the annexation and when the building was built. But that building that pertains to this, um, non-conformity with the setback, built in 1979, annexed in 1981. And then additional structures and expansions of build, of, uh, buildings on the property occurred in, uh, 1994, 1998, 2000 and 2005, with the property being platted in 2005. So here we get a look at the proposed site plan. Um, kind of everything that's a little more kind of a grayish color is some of the existing stuff. So over here you have existing buildings, um, some, uh, existing buildings there and some existing gravel. Um, so kind of looking first, the big red patched areas, as you can imagine, those are the pavement areas as kind of a lar, larger area of pavement. Um, but these are proposed areas for outdoor storage and parking. And you actually have a parking up here in the northwest, uh, northeast, my bad, northeast corner of the lot, um, with, uh, some islands, uh, for trees, since there's new parking would require trees. And then in the bottom down here, the smaller portion, this is the, where the proposed crane system is to go over the existing loading dock. And also it should be noted that, um, this portion up here, you can kind of see there's some trees proposed. Um, these are proposed street trees for the future, um, Woody Road right-of-way when it gets developed. And so looking at some of the existing non-conformities on the site, first focusing on that side setback for the lot. This is one of the existing, uh, buildings on the lot and this is the one that was built in 1979, annexed in 1981. The red, uh, dash line represents the required 25-foot side setback in the M1 district. And it's, um, not the biggest area, but this yellow portion is a portion of the building that's within that 25 feet. So it's actually, it's approximately, I believe, 21.8 feet from, uh, the side property line. So it's a little over. So it's a little over three feet into that side setback. So that's the portion of the existing building that's within that side setback. And then in terms of the minimum planting area and required street trees that would be required with a Woody Road right-of-way, this area represents kind of from the property line, which is roughly where my cursor is going to the red line, red dash line is, would be our minimum six-foot planting area along a right-of-way. And whenever we have street tree or whenever you have frontage on a public roadway, there's a requirement for street trees, whether you're in a corridor overlay district or just Woody Road's not a corridor overlay district. But still, street trees are required. And then the minimum planting area for any of those street trees is a six-foot minimum. And so currently, that yellow...red, my bad, red dash line represents where the six-foot planting area would go to on the property. And the yellow area is that existing pavement. This is an area that was developed as parking lot originally whenever the site was being developed. And this was prior to the actual dedication of the right-of-way in 2005. So before 2005, this area didn't have a dedication or didn't dedicate that land yet. So that's why the street tree requirement wouldn't have been a requirement at the time of development because they didn't have a right-of-way yet. So they didn't have something that was needing those street trees to be put in. So this is that portion...it's an existing portion. They are proposing to, with the area that they're developing, to put in the street trees for, you could call it the northern half of the frontage. But the southern half of the frontage, they're requesting the special exception, given the fact that there's existing pavement in there. And so looking at the approval criteria for a special exception, staff found that the request met criterion four for approval. And as noted, I know I've mentioned it three times now, but the existing building that was developed in 1979 was developed prior to the property being annexed into the city in 1981. So that setback requirement may not have been required at that time when it was developed. And additionally, as I just mentioned, the existing pavement along the southern portion of the future Woody Road frontage was developed prior to the right-of-way being dedicated through plat in 2005. And to note again, if the site were to come into compliance with the required front setback in the planting area, then any portion of that existing building or the pavement within the required area for planting would be...would need to be demolished as it encroaches, which may impose a hardship upon the property. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the special exception request to allow for development to occur on a property with an existing nonconformity. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, sir. We'd like to move into applicant presentation. Is there...would you like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the board and city. My name is Lokeesh Kozla, 14022 Hempstead Road, Houston, Texas. I'm here...I think city staff has covered the information. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. And please accept my apology for mispronouncing your name, sir. Any persons wishing to speak for or against proposal? We'd like to move into staff and applicant discussion. Any questions or comments from the board to the staff or applicant? We'd like to move into consideration and possible action. Motion, please?
I make a motion to approve variance 25-02 as presented.
It's been motioned, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Are we approving both at one time or there's two items?
Because, yes, sir, there are two items. And because the motion said as presented and both items were presented and both items were in the request, this vote would be for both.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. I'm sorry.
No, I did. Todd seconded. Yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. It is 6:54 PM. I would like to close the zoning board of adjustments meeting.